Call this meeting of the Moberly City Council a order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone, roll call please.
Lucas.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
McEwen.
Here.
Graff.
Here.
Scoobic.
Here.
Thank you, before you, you should have tonight's agenda for tonight's council meeting, are there any corrections or questions in regards to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Tonight's agenda has been approved. Also in your package, you should have received the minutes from the last city council meeting, are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The minutes stand approved as written. Recognition of visitors, Mr. Bogowski.
No visitors this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Just like to let everyone know that if you plan to speak to the city council, please come up and grab a green card from the clerk, fill it out. We'll call you up a little bit later on in the meeting and you'll have four minutes to address the city council at that time. Okay, communication requests and informational items, looks like we have a request from the Randolph area YMCA for the 2025 Turkey Trot 5K on November 27th, 2025, thing you'd like to add to that.
No, Mr. Mayor, this was discussed at work session at the last meeting and you all moved it forward to this, so if there are any further questions, we're happy to answer them.
Any further questions? With no objections from staff, do we have a motion for the approval of the Turkey Trot 5K?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Turkey Trot 5K has been approved. Okay, we've got a couple of public hearings this evening. First one is a public hearing for the city of Moberly, chapter 100 bonds for the Moberly Bakery Mix, the mental milling company. It's just where the city council will consider approval for an ordinance on November 17th, 2025, authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds pursuant to section 100 dash 010 to 100 dash 200 of the revised statutes of Missouri as amended. So we'll go ahead and begin the public hearing. If anyone would like to come up and speak for or against, now would be the time. Alright, seeing none, go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Also, we've got one additional public hearing, and this would be for an ordinance vacating an alleyway between the 300 block of Haygood Street and Johnson Street. A petition has been received requesting the vacation of an alleyway located between the 300 block of Haygood Street and Johnson Street, south of the right-of-way line of West End Place, extending approximately 160 feet to the north of an existing east-west alley in the city of Moberly, Missouri. Go ahead and open up, public hearing at this time, is there anyone that'd like to speak for or against? Hearing none, no takers this evening, go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Moving on to number five, we've got, we need to accept some bids, it looks like we've got bids for Seven Bridges Road, CSO sludge removal and basin upgrade. Looks like we've got several bids, several bids on the board, entertain a motion to accept those please.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The bids have been accepted. Also this evening, we do have a consent agenda, it includes items six through 14. Items are considered routine and will be adopted with a single vote, does any council member wish to remove any of the items for separate consideration? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the reading of tonight's consent agenda please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. First and only reading please.
Bill number R1906, a resolution approving a real estate contract with the Randolph County Health Department and other authority. Bill number R1907, a resolution accepting a bond engagement letter from S&amp;P Global Incorporated and authorizing the city manager to enter into such agreements as may be required by S&amp;P Global Incorporated to perform the credit rating service consistent with said letter and the S&amp;P Global Ratings data protection appendix to terms and conditions. Bill number R1908, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a form of completion certificate for First State Community Bank related to the equipment lease purchase agreement for the city water meter project. Bill number R1909, a resolution authorizing the purchase of crime scene barrier screens, communication headsets, SWAT helmets, and a digital evidence processor for the Moberly Police Department. Bill number R1910, a resolution accepting the bid of Salta's Technologies LLC for a Motorola brand digital electronic ticketing system for the Moberly Police Department. Bill number R1911, a resolution approving the purchase of turnout gear ensembles for the Moberly Fire Department. Bill number R1912, a resolution approving the purchase of a self-contained breathing apparatus, breathing air compressor, and fill station for the Moberly Fire Department. Bill number R1913, a resolution accepting permanent right-of-way and roadway easements from Glenda, Elaine Stoby, and Ernest Wheeler Kitchens as part of the South Morley Expansion Project. And bill number R1914, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a supplemental agreement, number one, with Bartlett and West Incorporated for design and construction inspection of project TAP-9900272.
Thank you, Ms. Hance, is there any questions or discussion regarding tonight's consent agenda? We discussed most of these at the last council meeting, and I know you asked most of your questions then, but if you've got any now, please speak up. We have a motion for the approval of tonight's consent agenda please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, number 15, an ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, I have an ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 1111 Concanon Street within the city of Moberly. I ask that this be read twice for consideration.
Thank you, you have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading please.
An ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 1111 Concanon Street within the city of Moberly, which required nuisance abatement by the city of Moberly pursuant to Article 1 and Article 2 of chapter 26 of the Moberly City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to section 26-2 and section 26-6 to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
Thank you, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, second reading please.
An ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 1111 Concanon Street within the city of Moberly, which required nuisance abatement by the city of Moberly pursuant to Article 1 and Article 2 of chapter 26 of the Moberly City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to section 26-2 and section 26-6 to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, roll call please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scoobic.
Yes.
Thank you, the ordinance has been approved. Number 16, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 1115 Concanon Street within the city of Moberly, and I ask that it be read twice for consideration.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. First reading please.
An ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 1115 Concanon Street within the city of Moberly, which required nuisance abatement by the city of Moberly pursuant to Article 1 and Article 2 of chapter 26 of the Moberly City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to section 26-2 and section 26-6 to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, second reading please.
An ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 1115 Concanon Street within the city of Moberly, which required nuisance abatement by the city of Moberly pursuant to Article 1 and Article 2 of chapter 26 of the Moberly City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to section 26-2 and section 26-6 to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
Thank you, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those, or, roll call please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scoobic.
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Number 17, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 419 North Fifth Street within the city of Moberly, Missouri. I ask that it be read twice for consideration of passage.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading please.
An ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 419 North Fifth Street within the city of Moberly, which required nuisance abatement by the city of Moberly pursuant to Article 1 and Article 2 of chapter 26 of the Moberly City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to section 26-2 and section 26-6 to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, second reading please.
An ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to 419 North Fifth Street within the city of Moberly, which required nuisance abatement by the city of Moberly pursuant to Article 1 and Article 2 of chapter 26 of the Moberly City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to section 26-2 and section 26-6 to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
I didn't get it, could you read it just one more time? Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second, roll call please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scoobic.
Yes.
Thank you, the ordinance has been adopted. Number 18, an ordinance.
Mayor, I have an ordinance vacating an alleyway described as running north and south between the 300 block of Haygood Street and Johnson Street, and south of the right-of-way line of the West End Place, then south a distance of 160 feet to the north of an existing east-west alley in the city of Moberly, Missouri, and ask that be read twice for consideration.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. First reading please.
An ordinance vacating an alleyway described as running north and south between the 300 block of Haygood Street and Johnson Street, and south of the right-of-way line of West End Place, then south a distance of 160 feet to the north line of an existing east-west alley in the city of Moberly, Missouri.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, second reading please.
An ordinance vacating an alleyway described as running north and south between the 300 block of Haygood Street and Johnson Street, and south of the right-of-way line of West End Place, then south a distance of 160 feet to the north line of an existing east-west alley in the city of Moberly, Missouri.
Thank you, any further questions or discussion from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, roll call please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scoobic.
Yes.
Thank you, the ordinance has been adopted. Number 19, an ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a financial assistance award for a source water protection plan revision project, ask that this be read twice for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. First reading please.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a financial assistance award for a source water protection plan revision project.
Thank you, any questions? Hearing none, second reading please.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a financial assistance award for a source water protection plan revision project.
Any further questions or discussion from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, roll call please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scoobic.
Yes.
Thank you, the ordinance has been adopted. Number 20, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Metro Ag Waste Injection Systems, Inc. for sludge removal from the Seven Bridges CSO Basin and ratifying all acts taken by city staff and furtherance thereof. And I ask that be read twice for consideration.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye. All opposed nay. First reading please.
An ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Metro Ag Waste Injection Systems Incorporated for sludge removal from the Seven Bridges CSO Basin and ratifying all acts taken by city staff and furtherance thereof.
Thank you, any questions or discussion from council? Second reading please.
An ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Metro Ag Waste Injection Systems Incorporated for sludge removal from the Seven Bridges CSO Basin and ratifying all acts taken by city staff and furtherance thereof.
Thank you, last chance, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, roll call please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scoobic.
Yes.
Thank you, the ordinance has been approved. Number 21, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Emery Sapp &amp; Sons, Inc. for stormwater improvements at the Seven Bridges CSO Basin and ratifying all acts taken by city staff and furtherance thereof, and I ask that it be read twice for consideration of passage.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. First reading please.
An ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Emery Sapp &amp; Sons Incorporated for stormwater improvements at the Seven Bridges CSO Basin and ratifying all acts taken by city staff and furtherance thereof.
Thank you, any questions or discussion? Second reading please.
An ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Emery Sapp &amp; Sons Incorporated for stormwater improvements at the Seven Bridges CSO Basin and ratifying all acts taken by city staff and furtherance thereof.
Any additional questions from council? Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, roll call please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scoobic.
Yes.
Thank you, the ordinance has been adopted. Number 22, an ordinance.
Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing the city of Moberly, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds of Moberly Bakery Mix LLC project, series 2025, in a principal amount not to exceed $38 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a facility for an industrial development project in the city. Approving a plan for the project and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. I make a motion to introduce this ordinance.
Thank you, we have a motion for the introduction of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading please.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Moberly, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds of Moberly Bakery Mix LLC project, series 2025, in a principal amount not to exceed $38 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a facility for an industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Thank you, any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none, second reading please.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Moberly, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds of Moberly Bakery Mix LLC project, series 2025, in a principal amount not to exceed $38 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a facility for an industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for the project and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, it's my understanding that staffs indicated that this ordinance is not ready for council action this evening, I would entertain a motion to table the ordinance number 9927 until the November 17th meeting, and I would entertain a motion for that now.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scoobic.
Yes.
Thank you, the ordinance has been tabled till, until November 17th. Number 23, a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the acceptance, accepting change orders number one and two to the Sparks Avenue Lift Station Force Main and Sewer Extension Contract with Emery Sapp &amp; Sons. Ask that this be read once for consideration.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. First and only reading please.
A resolution authorizing and accepting change orders number one and two to the Sparks Avenue Lift Station Force Main and Sewer Extension Contract with Emery Sapp &amp; Sons.
Thank you, any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Resolution has been approved. Number 24, a resolution.
Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between October 17th and October 30th in the amount of $881,125.09 and I ask that it be read once for consideration.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. First and only reading please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between October 17th, 2025, and October 30th, 2025 in the amount of $881,125.09.
Thank you, and I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Moberly, Missouri unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Allison Boyd, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Resolution has been approved. That does it for ordinances and resolutions. You made it. Under the subheading, anything else to come before the council? Consideration of a reappointment to the Housing Authority Board. We had one nomination, Mr. Oscar Williams, and I have to tell you that we pushed this through work session last, last meeting, and it just so happened that the next day that they were renaming the community center at Allendale Manor after Mr. Williams, and I had to go speak at this particular event. So I'm very glad that we approved Mr. Williams, because I would have felt pretty darn silly had we not. Mr. Williams has been, I believe, on this board for 35 or 45 years. Through 15 mayors, I believe, and I asked him if he could name five, but unfortunately he could not. So we'll entertain a motion to approve Mr. Williams for another term on the Moberly Housing Authority Board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Mr. Williams has earned himself another term. Number 26, consideration of an appointment to the Board of Adjustment to fill the unexpired term of Rick Drown.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you all took this up at work session last meeting, and Mr. Rick Drown left town, so he resigned from the board. Mr. Dustin Tallman reached out and submitted an application, and he would be qualified to fill this position, so you all moved him forward to this meeting.
Thank you, do we have a motion for the approval of Mr. Tallman to the board?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Mr. Tallman has earned himself a term on the board. Number 27, consideration of reappointments to the Airport Advisory Board. Looks like Rin Johanna Byrne, Lori Miller, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, applying to be reappointed.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion for the approval of these two for another term on the board?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. They have been approved. Okay, that does it for board appointments and reappointments down to the public comments section. Is there anyone at this time that would like to come and speak to the city council? What about the city council, didn't you guys have anything to say? I told you not to. I love it. Okay, looks like we have no public comments, so I consider a motion to adjourn to work session followed by a closed session to discuss the status of personnel and personally identifiable personnel record matters.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scoobic.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, we are adjourned from normal council session. For normal council meeting, we will move right into work session. Okay, number one, receipt of bids for City Hall HVAC system piping and flushing.
Okay. So last year, online, did some evaluation on City Hall, and part of that was looking at the HVAC system. They found some evidence of mineral buildup and corrosion in the system. So that necessitates basically a flushing and cleaning, a chemical flush. The system's been operations, in operation since January of 2010, and nothing's ever been done to it. So that really doesn't surprise me that we're having this issue. One of the consultants that Devon had in with this project was J Squared Engineering. Can't talk tonight. They are an HVAC specialist, so they did recommend the two firms that I reached out to for bids. So there's the tabulation there in the item for you, and we're recommending to go with the Durbin Enterprises from Illinois on this.
Okay, very good. Any questions from council for Mr. Hodge regarding the HVAC system at City Hall? Hearing none, any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we'll move this one forward, thank you, sir. Number two, short-term disability proposal for Mutual of Omaha.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we provide multiple different supplemental insurance packages for city employee benefits. So Mutual of Omaha is the carrier that we use for these, so that provides long-term disability insurance, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, as well as a standard life insurance policy for all employees. Now, as part of our pricing for paying for those coverage lines, they also sell voluntary lines that the city employees can purchase at their own expense, should they choose to do so. Those sales of the voluntary lines subsidize our cost for the coverages we buy for everybody. Because the participation rate on the voluntary lines has dropped to such a low number, they're passing on a price increase of $4,964. As a alternative to that, they also offered us the opportunity of purchasing short-term disability, which we currently have no short-term disability coverage. That package would be $19,551. So the option on the table here is really go with the short-term disability policy, and there's no additional increases to our existing lines, or decline that and accept the increase of $4,0964 for the current lines we are paying for. So I know there's a lot of information in there, there are two different proposals from Mutual of Omaha, and there's also a letter from our health insurance broker who facilitates this arrangement for us. Happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? The fourth, the 4,000 that's there now, clarify this. It's going to increase the 4,000, everyone that has the short-term disability now, it's going to increase by that amount, is that correct?
No, we have no short-term disability coverage, that essentially $5,000 coverage, that would just be for our long-term disability coverage, our life insurance that everybody has, and our accidental death and dismemberment coverage. So that $5,000 is just a cost increase for existing services, no new additional or better services.
I see, but if we, if we did the short-term disability, then ultimately there would be no increase of the 4,000, of the $4,964.
No increase in the incumbent coverages plus a new coverage.
But you're still talking a net positive difference of 15, roughly 15,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have anything to offer on that? I mean, we're going to be looking at some pretty, pretty substantial increases in insurance coverages in the next, you know... in insurance coverages in the next, you know, few months, you know, coming down the pipe. So, you know, is now the time to add additional? You know, I, I know we're always trying to do different things to attract employees, retain employees, but at the same time, if we see fifteen, twenty percent increases in our normal insurances, is that, how does everyone feel about that, might be the question?
Mayor, I got a comment, so I, I guess it's how important that short-term disability is to staff. Because I hate to add something, just to add something, and we'll be paying nineteen thousand difference versus fourteen thousand, or forty-nine hundred. I don't know, I just, I don't, I don't feel like we need to want to be in a situation where we have to do this. But if it is something that is really wanted and would be attractive for, you know, retaining and recruiting, then that's different.
It, it's kind of like, do we buy it just because it's on sale kind of scenario? How often would you feel in a year that, you know, on average, that short-term disability would be used by staff?
I think they said on average for a group of our size, they would expect it to be used about three to four times. So there's a couple of things it does not cover, so if you're any kind of workplace injury, that's work comp, that is not short-term disability. So what this would really cover, the textbook examples are these two things. If an employee on his or her personal time is in a car accident and is out of work for six weeks, they can go on short-term disability for that purpose. The other opportunity that comes up a lot is somebody who has like a knee replacement surgery and is out of work for six weeks. Lot of times surgeries tend to be why people wind up on short-term disability. So kind of difficult to predict, but I think, if I recall correctly, they said they would gather about three to four people.
You know, I just, I don't know that people stay or go or come because of short-term disability, you know, they're, they're looking at the other insurance options. I would be entertained moving this forward and just kind of doing a little bit more research, where we can yea or nay at the, at the council meeting, do you guys?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So would the nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars be the price every year?
So it's not fixed for any, any more than one year. I will say with our Mutual of Omaha policies, they've been pretty static over time. We don't see large cost increases on that, but, you know, it, it is only fixed for one year, and I think that's the best answer I can give you.
Okay.
Mr. Kimmons?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, I think it's important that the employees understand just what these coverages are and what's available to them, because under our plan, they're available at a very competitive price. If you ask somebody just on the street, you want, you want short-term disability? But when you explain what it would cover, what it would do, then I think it makes more sense. We have a good plan, we do have some things we need to look at, I agree. But I, I think this might be a nice addition from my point of view.
Sure. Appreciate the input, sir. Any additional questions, comments? No? Any objection to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward and make a decision. Number three, report of the director of community development for demolition charges for one-one-oh-four Concanon Street.
It's a large two-story, well, two-story house there on the south side of the road there. See the location, but see the demolition charges there, nothing else unusual there.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Nope. Any objections to moving that one forward? Okay, we will move that one forward to the next council meeting. Number four, receipt of bids for farm lease of a hundred and fifty-three more or less acres at thirty-one-hundred North Morley, which is what we refer to as the industrial park.
We had a slight reduction of acreage out there due to the roads being constructed and put in, I think it was about seven acres or something like that, we cut off as a result of that, but the remaining acreage there, we put out for bids and see the high bid was two fifty, that's, you know, we had a substantial increase, I think we were one seventy-seven prior to that, even at the airport, I think it was in the two-ten, two-fifteen range, so quite a bit more than
Yeah. Yeah, and this is a, this is a one-year agreement, is that right?
Farming leases, to make the leases on their beneficial, you know, where they're applying fertilizer and insurance and things like that, maintain the land, they're on extended lease, so we had, the airport was a five-year one, I believe this is five years, well.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sanders regarding farming lease? Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move that one forward to the next council meeting. Number five, an ordinance repealing ordinance number nine-seven-nine-two and terminating a cooperative agreement with R and D Development, or R and D Properties LLC for infill development.
We had a few properties where we, you know, we've done development agreements, and we signed those up, and council approved those, and we take them back, so these two right here have not been fulfilled, the time has expired, and they've expressed the desire that they don't want to pursue, are not going to pursue building houses on these properties, so should we just?
It's just one, just one.
Just the one, okay, just the
This is the one that was never signed, so we don't have a contract, we're just terminating.
Windsor?
No, this is
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
There's a few of them, so that's why, so I'm scrolling down there and I wasn't getting to it fast enough.
It's, it's not in the, the title. What's ninety-seven? Ten thirty-two Franklin Street.
Ah, okay. All right, yes, that one, no one, was not signed, so I apologize for the confusion.
So it wasn't signed, that's, that's why it's coming to you in the form of repealing an ordinance.
So this would ultimately be immediately available for reassignment to another developer, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward. Number six, notice, let's see. Number six, notice of a public hearing for a zoning change submitted by Holman Properties LLC for the property located at three-four-two to three-four-eight Woodland Avenue from R-two P-D, one and two family residential district planned development to R-three multifamily dwelling district.
So this is the site of the old Woodland Hospital, and it was, Holman purchased that, torn it, tore it down, and did a lot of work on sewer lines, the intention of doing a multifamily, or excuse me, a multi-unit, twenty-four unit complex that would serve like assisted living, and then the market went down on that, and so he's like, that's not gonna work, you know, and so he said, I'm gonna come back and we had passed a R-two P-D for that area with two duplexes on the north side, which he's constructed, and you see that now. And so he, they come, and when he came back to plan and zoning was to rezone to R-three, the goal is to build four more duplexes on the property, so it'd be a total of six. There's two on the north side, there'd be two on the middle facing Virginia, and two on the south side facing not Woodland, Logan. So anyhow, the, the facility's very nice, they went through P and Z, P and Z approved it, and for the changes.
Is, you know, the only question that I would have, and I was on, at the P and Z meeting, when he approached us, that's gonna be a pretty nice development. There was one neighbor there that was a little bit concerned, it's just gone on for, you know, a long time, and there's been different ideas, and, and just kind of been a slow process, just kind of concerned of the, the mess and different things, and just wonder if, you know, we can kind of help keep an eye on that, just to make sure that, you know, the neighborhood's remaining happy, and if not, we can, you know, try to say something and, and make it happen, so.
I think they met following the meeting, and he's agreed to complete the sidewalk along the Virginia Street and
Good.
curb and stuff to get that done, so that would, that would help the curb appeal significantly, significantly, and then also, we've been talking to him about, you know, keeping it mowed down, and they mowed it, but they, there was still some weeds and stuff around the river.
He does a lot of things, you know, for us, and we hire him for a lot of things, and so appreciate his investment in the community for doing that, so, any questions? Any objections to moving that one forward? Okay. Number seven, request from railroad employees to install a park bench within the city right-of-way at the Coates Street Railroad Crossing.
So they, there have been, you know, people that sit out there and watch trains on a fairly frequent basis, and with the revisions of that, they removed some guard rail there on the north side, and were wanting to have a place, that was kind of the place people sat on, so thought to have a more formal location, so the park, or the railroad group has wanted to pay for that, put a, a park bench in there, in the middle of the right-of-way, which in reviewing that with the railroad, we determined it is city street right-of-way in between the railroad, and so it's up to us if we want to approve that, but there's plenty of spacing in there, and they've sat in there anyhow, so this will give a safe, comfortable place for train watchers.
Well, and while, while it doesn't list any names, and I'm not gonna name any, but I, I think we all know who, who watches trains, you know, at that location, and, you know, it kind of took a spot when they, when they redid that whole crossing, so I thought this was a really, really cool gesture on their part to do this, so I, I would be one hundred percent supportive of this.
You know, Mayor, many, many years ago, when Morbly had their own trash business, the gentleman we're referring to, but not by name, was an employee with the city, and very positive employee. So I, I think it's great.
Good, good. Those are the feel-good things that you like to, like to see happen, so any questions or objections to moving this one forward? Nope, okay, we will move this one forward. Number eight, receipt of bids, Omar in Bradley, construction of T-hanger and Taxi Line, project number twenty-four dash oh-three-four A dash one.
So we have funding approved for this to go toward, you know, for several years, we've combined federal money to stack this up, and so within the budget, the, we spread it into two places, pieces, for the taxi lane portion and the T-hanger structures. The taxi lane portion of the bid came in within our funding levels, the six hundred and forty-one thousand two oh-four from Holman was the low bid on that, and the T-hangers were a little high, so as it was split up, we were requesting that bid to be approved for us to proceed, and the T-hanger structures, we know, wait out till the spring, or around maybe February of twenty twenty-six to rebid that portion of it, when hopefully we'll get more interested bidders, their books won't be so full of work.
Sure. Any, any questions regarding this particular request? Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we'll move this one forward to the next council meeting. Number nine, review of proposals for twenty-twenty-five equipment financing, and I know this, this encompasses several last meeting, and then I think one or two meetings back as well, a piece of equipment that was approved then. Get it open here. So.
Trying to make sure I have my microphone on here. So we, we were putting a RFP out for financing for the mini excavator and the crack sealer for the streets community development department. We got responses back from six different banks throughout the area, and based on the, the total cost of the financing, we're recommending going with the proposal from County Bank, which comes in at the lowest total cost of that financing for those two pieces.
Very good. Any questions regarding the financing piece? Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward to the next council meeting. And last item on the agenda for the work session, number ten, Kiwanis Park change order. Mr. Bach?
So in reviewing this project with the contractor and the engineers, the only deviation from the specifications as laid out was the sidewalk to the west of the playground. It's more of an emergency escape, it's not where you typically approach from the east and the south side. To get it right, it would mean adding two foot of width, but significant disruption to the the existing sidewalk, the curbing, fencing, and the playground surface, so the obvious consensus was amongst the three parties to go ahead and change order this out, so it's a deduction for the concrete mist and the rest of the project past muster, so this cleans that up, we're, we're working on closeout between now and Thanksgiving, hopefully.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Bach? Hearing none, any objections to moving this one forward? Okay. Well, that will do it for work session this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
She'll move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, we are adjourned from work session, thank you all for taking the time and coming.